I call the February the eighth, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Jacks. Commissioner Barlow.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Hassett.
Present.
Commissioner Hubbard.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Patillo.
Here.
Commissioner Alexander.
Here.
Commissioner Morse. And Chairperson Gillette.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I'll have the automated announcement message, please.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
Thank you. I would like to ask Bruce Hubbard, welcome Bruce Hubbard to our commission. He's a brand-new member, and I would like to have Brad Mill come to the front, please.
Please state your name and address.
Brad, we would like to present you with your name that we have used all this time. Plus, I have a plaque for you, and it says, "Presented to Brad Mill in appreciation of your eight years of service." That's four years on the Board of Adjustment and four years on this board, Mojave County and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you so much for your service. I think I'm gonna come around there just for one minute.
We're gonna miss you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I'm gonna miss you, too.
Well, you know how to fight me.
Well, yeah, yeah. I just gotta pick up the phone.
Yeah, I'm easy to fight. I can't hide.
Okay. Have a good one. Enjoy serving with you for a few months. Yeah. It's been a pleasure.
Congratulations. That's just Dale.
Thank you. Is that chair? Say good.
Does the noise say?
Yes, it is. Now, we'll have a motion for approval to the January the eleventh Planning and Zoning Commission minutes.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve with a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item number one, and that's Matthew Gunderson.
Item number one is an evaluation of a request for a rezone for Assessor's parcel number 402-24133 from an AR agricultural residential zone to an RE residential recreation zone to bring the parcel into compliance in the Littlefield vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I will open the public meeting. Is anyone wishing to speak on this item? Is the applicant here, and would you like to speak? Okay. Hearing none. Any commissioners need to ask any questions of this applicant?
Chairman Gillette, I would like to ask the staff a question. So this is to rezone it to bring it into compliance. Is that, what's noncompliant about its current zoning? Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Patillo, so currently the property is owned AR, which has a one-acre minimum lot size. The property has a gross acreage of exactly one acre, but because it's a corner lot, it has ingress and egress easements around three sides of the property. And so any property that's less than five acres, we have to subtract those easements from the lot size to determine if it still meets that minimum lot size requirement. So when those are subtracted, it does not meet the minimum lot size.
Thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing. The chair will now call for a motion.
Move a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jacks, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Oh, no, I guess I better. Does anybody wanna say nay? So moved. Item number two, Amy Patsy.
Item number two is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County general plan from a neighborhood commercial land use designation to a general commercial land use designation and a rezone from an AR 10A agricultural residential ten-acre minimum lot size zone to a C2H highway commercial zone for Assessor's parcel number 402-77001Q to allow for automobile sales in the scenic vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing for item number two. Is the applicant present, and do you wish to speak? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do any commissioners have any questions on this item? Then I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Alexander. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number three, Alex Bolan.
Item three is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County general plan from a low-density residential land use designation to a general commercial land use designation and a rezone from an AR agricultural residential zone to a C2H highway commercial zone for Assessor's parcel numbers 30506-137 and 30506-138 to allow for an office and retail center in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak?
If I am, then I'll.
Okay. She's available for questions. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on item three? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Does any commissioner have a question on item three? Hearing none, I will call for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jacks, seconded by Commissioner Alexander. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number four is Amy Patsy.
Item number four, evaluation of a request for an extension of time for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number 31749102 to allow for additional time for completion of the conditions of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-177 to allow for a billboard in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Did the commissioners have any questions? Then I call for a motion.
I have one question to staff, if that's okay.
Okay, sure.
And I'm mostly ignorant on this subject, but is there, are there still provisions? I know, I think there used to be on ninety-three, state provisions to maintain a little more darkness. Is that still an issue relative to signs such as this in that area? Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Patillo, the county does have a dark sky ordinance as part of the zoning ordinance, so there are lighting requirements for billboards. I don't know all of them off the top of my head, but there's, it includes shielding and kind of how those signs can be lit, but that's determined by the zoning ordinance. Okay.
Then I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Barlow. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number five. Staff, Alex Bolan.
Item number five is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number 20840027 to allow for a billboard in a CMO 4A commercial manufacturing open lot storage four-acre minimum lot size zone in the Yucca vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. Is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak? Please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have two minutes.
Good morning. My name is Brad Sauerbeer. I own Park Road. My address is 406 Desert Canyon Boulevard at Orondo, Washington, 98843. Thanks for considering this application. We've spent a lot of time researching where we can put a billboard along I-40 in this area. There are certain scenic designations along here, and this area is not one of those. So we meet the criteria in terms of the code, in term, where we can place a billboard. It's a CMO zone for outdoor storage and so forth. It's surrounded by other industrial properties. They aren't currently occupied, they're all vacant land, but all the zoning in the area along this frontage road is industrial, or CMO, I should say. We already have some clients interested in this location. We've been very happy with the local businesses advertising on our signs and increasing their businesses. We've had some clients on those billboards for years because of the success of promoting their business. Thank you so much.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions? Thank you, sir. Are there any others that wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'll now call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item five with staff recommendations.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hassett, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number six, staff report is by Matthew Gunderson.
Item number six is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number 20840032 to allow for an eighty-five-foot-tall and six-hundred-and-twenty-five-square-foot sign in a CMO commercial manufacturing open lot storage zone in the Yucca vicinity. The zoning ordinance does allow for a special use permit to allow for an increase to on-premises signs along federally identified interstates, which this qualifies for. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item number six? Is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak? Please come forward and give us your name and your address.
Good morning. Jack Reimer with Pilot Travel Centers, 5508 Lonest Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37934. First off, just wanna say thank you for your time and your consideration today. Thank you for the staff for the positive recommendation. We are a convenience-based business, so having adequate signage is definitely something that's really important to be able to make the travel center function, have the traffic that we want to, primarily just here for any questions, but thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Does any commissioners have any questions for this applicant? Thank you, sir. I'm gonna close the public hearing. The chair will now call for a motion.
Move to approve with staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Patillo, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number seven, staff report by Amy Patsy.
Item number seven is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 31361023C from an AR 10A agricultural residential ten-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 5A agricultural residential five-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm gonna now open the public hearing. Is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak? Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Does any commissioner have any questions or comments? Then I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Jeff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number eight, staff report by Alex Bolan.
Item number eight is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number 32424443A to allow for a marijuana establishment in a C2H highway commercial zone in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant present, and do you wish to speak? Please give your name and your address.
Thank you very much, Chair Gillette. For your record, Lindsay Shuby with Gamage &amp; Burnham, 40 North Central in Phoenix, Arizona. I'm here on behalf of this case. Thanks staff for their support and their work on this case and recommendation of support today, and just stand for questions if you have any.
Are there any questions of this applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Chair now call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item eight with staff recommendations.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hassett, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number nine, staff report by Matthew Gunderson.
Item number nine is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number 35232021B to allow for a cemetery in an AR 36A agricultural residential thirty-six acre minimum lot size zone in the Kingman vicinity. Staff has received two petitions with approximately twenty-one signatures in favor of this item. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to speak?
No, Madam Chair, we don't, but we're here if you need questions.
Thank you. Are there any others wishing to speak on this subject? I do have a request from Michael Reed. Would you come forward, please? Name your address.
Yes, thank you. My name's Michael Reed. My address is 3158 North Mapewana Trail. I live in the Willow Creek Ranch area, probably about five miles from this location. Also, am the board of directors on the Willow Creek Ranch POA. So I took it upon myself to actually look at the bylaws and the CCNRs and found that there's no issues whatsoever with the cemetery in that area, so I wanted to express that to the commission. Also wanted, if you don't, if I could take just a few seconds to express some conversations I've had with staff regarding lot splits in this area. Our actual bylaws are acreage-based for assessment fees on road maintenance and are primitive roads, and I appreciate staff sending me notifications of these meetings, and we're not necessarily in favor of those due to the impact of traffic and the cost associated with it. Meaning, six hundred, for good example, would be, there are three hundred lots, and if they were split, it'd be six hundred lots, our revenue would not go up, and we'd have double the traffic, and there was still the responsibility for maintenance. So I just wanted the commission to be aware of the concerns of the community in splitting lots in that area, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I also have a Sam Harrison, is that correct? Please come to the podium, state your name and your address.
Morning, my name is Sam Harrison. My address is 3699 North Valvin Antler Road in Kingman. I own the property that is directly to the south of the Mason's property. I'm completely in favor of them doing what they wish with their property, it is their property. I got to the point where I told them if they wanna use my backhoe in furtherance of their cemetery, they're welcome to use that, too. I think, really, if anybody got to the point to where they would see a headstone on the Mason's property, seeing that headstone would really be the least of their concerns at that point. Thanks.
You're welcome. Anyone else wishing to speak on this subject? Well, I have a question. Is this currently a cemetery?
No, Madam Chair.
Please come to the podium. So this is not currently a cemetery?
Correct.
And how much land are we talking about for the cemetery?
Probably an eighth of an acre, if that.
An acre.
We own about two hundred acres in that area, and they're all combined.
All right. Does any of the other commissioners want to ask a question?
I have a question. I guess it's for staff. Being that this is, they're requesting a special use permit, is that something that needs to be extended every so many years? If they got denied in the future?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Martin, so some special use permits, we do have expiration on this one in the conditions of approval, there's not an expiration. But it is, per, special use permits in general, the board has the discretion to go in and revoke a special use permit, or if they don't start, if they don't ever use it as a cemetery, then the special use permit could expire.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, one.
Did you want?
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Hassett.
Just for record, in the emails, it all says family cemetery, but this just says cemetery, so I'm assuming it's restricted for use just for your family slash bloodline, or?
Correct. Family, bloodline, that is correct.
Only because I have slight prior knowledge in this industry, I would recommend also reaching out to the Department of Real Estate, that's who oversees cemeteries in the state of Arizona. I don't know what their requirements are for a private cemetery, but it is something to take into consideration when trying to establish burial permits to utilize that space. So I was just curious if it was public or not.
It's not public, no.
And be sure and attend the supervisors' meeting regarding this. Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions? Commissioner?
What's the length of time that you're gonna have to keep this up?
Good question. We have a trust for all of our properties, and the trust is for five hundred years, so we're gonna be here for a while.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Martin?
The applicant states that they're using one acre for the cemetery, is that correct?
I don't, to be honest with you, I'm not really sure. I don't think we put a specific size, I just, we're just, you know, it's gonna be a pretty small spot out in the middle of all the properties, so it won't be visible from the road. It'd be backways.
On the staff recommendations, are we stipulating that only so much of the property can be used for a cemetery? Being that, I believe you said you own two hundred acres?
Yeah, we own approximately two hundred, we have five, approximately five thirty-six acre parcels, and we combine them.
So is it being parceled out? Are you gonna survey and parcel out, have a specific parcel utilized just for the cemetery? Or when the applicant? Or when the application is put in, is it put in for that entire parcel?
It would be a small percentage from our perspective. I don't know what the county would want.
I only ask because cemeteries are exempt and tax-exempt in the state of Arizona, so I would, I'd be curious to see if it's going to be that entire, because that's, that is a whole parcel, correct? It's listed?
Didn't you mention it was about one eighth, one eighth of one acre?
Hi, I'm Sheila Mason. We, we're going to actually put it behind the house on the primary parcel. If you look at the parcel that you see mapped there, that's four of our five parcels that are merged into a single piece. We're only going to utilize a small portion behind the house, which you should have a map where I marked it on there, that it'll be just behind the house, and it'll only consume maybe a half to possibly three-quarters of an acre, but it is within the fenced area that we already have fenced where our domicile is on the original parcel.
I don't see where it's, I see the parcel, but I don't see where it's mapped out specifically.
Well, that might have been, because I know I had to put them in with all the letters that I sent out to the neighbors, so maybe you didn't end up getting a portion of it. But if we take an overview, a map, and look at the, where our house is?
Right.
It's only going to be just behind the house, within the fenced-in area.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
So, would you be opposed if we stipulated your special use permit not to exceed one acre?
That would be fine. I have no problem with that.
For the record, I for one, I do support this, but I really feel that it should be surveyed and parceled out as its own parcel. Only based solely on, I mean, from a tax standpoint, and then from like, I know that you're not open to the public, so you don't have to worry about an endowment care fund or anything like that, but the perpetual care of the cemetery rolling forward. I understand the trust is 500 years, but none of us are going to last that long.
Well, our trust is a little unique compared to most. Ours does not get dispersed upon our death. We have an executor and a board that will propagate for the future generations where they vote in the next executor to maintain the property, and all of our finances will be left to maintain the property for property taxes, insurance, et cetera. I'm a retired vet, so I believe as of this year, we don't have property taxes, at least on our primary domicile anyway, so I don't think that'll be affected by this cemetery or not, and we're only going to utilize less than an acre. And we actually live right next to it, so if we segregated that off, we just merged all those properties together to retain them within the trust.
Well, thank you for your service. I'm not sure on the whole tax thing for you as far as being exempt. I'm not sure on that one.
I think it just was voted in this year, this last year?
Well, good.
For retired vets.
I support that, so thank you. But I agree with Commissioner Martin, we either restrict the size or parcel it out to be that specific piece of land.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, as far as parceling it out, the property is currently zoned AR-36A, so they would have to go through a rezone if they wanted to go smaller than that 36-acre parcel. The special use permit currently, as presented, is for the entire property. They could place the cemetery, if approved, by the Board of Supervisors. They could place the cemetery wherever they would like on that site, but the commission could put a stipulation in there like Commissioner Martin expressed of just limiting it to one acre size. They could even say where it should be located. If they're looking to do it right behind the house, they can say one acre behind the house.
So is it possible to, instead of going through the, dividing down the whole parcel and doing that, is it possible to get survey points and say, "These are the markings in which we are allocating for the cemetery use"?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hassett, so that is possible. If you want it before this meeting, we would have to continue this item for the, a future meeting.
Can we say that, condition it to be designated not to exceed one acre?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Martin, that's correct. You could, you could condition it for that.
We could, we could put that in our motion, correct?
Correct.
I have one more question of staff.
Yes, Commissioner Patillo?
So the only concern that I have is, well, that actually I was made aware of right at this meeting, the tax implications. If this is approved, are they going to have a 200-acre parcel that is exempt from property tax in perpetuity? Should they not own it in the future? I realize you're currently exempt, but if it's sold, or it's inherited, or, I don't know. The property somehow transfers and would normally be subject to property tax, would it then not be subject to property tax?
Commissioner Patillo and Chairman Gillette, to answer your question, if this were approved by the Board of Supervisors, with just the staff recommendations that have been approved, it would likely be, the entire property would be tax-exempt. However, if the commission recommends the suggestion by Commissioner Martin to limit the special use permit to one acre within the entire parcel, the assessor's office would have to take a look at it and figure out what the value is, because only that portion of the property would be exempt.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none? Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And is there any more questions from the commissioners? And I call for a motion.
I move to approve with staff recommendations and the stipulation that it be no more than one acre in size.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Patillo, seconded by Commissioner Jeff. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item number 10. Staff, Amy Patsy.
Item number 10 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel numbers 32411058, 32411059, and 32411060, from a C2H highway commercial zone to a CMO, Commercial Manufacturing, open lot storage zone, to allow for outdoor storage of shed units in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant present and do you wish to speak? Hearing none? Are there any other who wish to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing. Any commissioners have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do, just to clarify.
Commissioner Alexander?
Just a clarification with staff. This is the Gas and Grub seeking to put sheds for sale on this property, not actual storage for themselves, but for sale sheds.
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Alexander, so my understanding is it's, the applicant's looking to purchase the property from Gas and Grub, and they would, they sell the sheds at a different location in Kingman. This would be the storage of the excess sheds that they have that don't fit on their current site. So they're not selling from that site, they would only be storing them on the property.
And nor are they storing items in those sheds.
Correct. They're storing the sheds, they're not storing items in the sheds.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this subject? I'll close the public hearing. And do, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jaxx and a second by Commissioner Alexander. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 11. Staff, Alex Bowlen.
Item number 11 is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number 35437012 to allow for a commercial kennel and an AR-10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends this item be continued due to ongoing legal allegations against the applicant.
I believe I need a motion to continue. Is that correct? Then I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Get to ask any questions?
Well, if they...
Apparently not.
Okay, do you want to ask a question, Commissioner Hassett?
Yeah, I'd like to know what the ongoing legal actions are.
Boom. Commissioner Hassett and Chairman Gillette, for the commission's information, there is an ongoing criminal investigation. For the commission's, I don't know if this is going to work, but for the commission's information, there is an ongoing criminal investigation and current criminal case in the justice court involving this parcel and the owner of the parcel in the Kingman Justice Court. That is the reason that, that staff has recommended a continuance of this item.
Legal action based on what the intent of the rezoning is, or not affiliated? I could Google it if you wanted me to.
It is tied in, yes.
Okay. Yeah, well, go for it.
Well, any other questions? Commissioner Alexander?
Do we make a motion to continue it as to a certain date, or do we leave that open?
You can't make a motion to continue it to a specific date, or you can leave it open. Another option would be to table it and then wait until one of the commissioners wants to remove it from the table and make a motion to remove it from the table at a later date.
If we... Go ahead.
Commissioner Hubbard?
So could we extend, table it until the lawsuit's finished and the outcome of that, and then maybe continue it or stop it at that time?
And just for clarification, it's not a lawsuit, it's actually a criminal case. The, you can table it and wait until the criminal matter is resolved. I can't advise on how long it will take to resolve that criminal matter. Sometimes criminal matters take many years to resolve if someone doesn't show up and a bench warrant issues, it could just be pending on the, in bench warrant status on the justice court's docket for many years. And if you table it, it will stay there for that length of time until one of the commissioners, either yourselves or your successors, removes it from the table, if that's the option that you take. If, if you continue it, you would want to continue it to some date, and again, I don't know when that's going to happen. Another option would be to shoot it down, another option would be to approve it, but that's certainly up to the commission.
So if we, if we extend it, can they continue their operation?
They don't have a special use permit, there is no special use permit for a kennel at the facility at this point, and so legally, they are not able to do that. Factually, anybody can do whatever they want, but that doesn't mean there aren't legal consequences for doing whatever you want. I don't know if that answers your questions.
Was the applicant present?
No. I'd like to...
And just for clarification, oftentimes, this is a misdemeanor case, and oftentimes, when someone is, a complaint is lodged against someone on a misdemeanor case, they're not typically, they don't typically remain in jail for lengthy periods of time while the case is pending.
Yeah, they had to have filed this, so probably out.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Commissioner Martin.
Should take into consideration the applicant is not here to answer any questions?
I was going to ask, I see, I noticed that we have animal control in the room, and I'm just wondering...
Chairman Gillette, if I can interject, I apologize, but for the commission's information, any animal control officers from the Mojave County Animal Control are here in their personal capacity. While they might have additional knowledge because of their professional positions, they would be here speaking, if they speak, in their personal capacity.
Thank you. I just have a sneaking suspicion that they are here because of item 11, and I was wondering, would any of you like to come up and speak to the commission? Please.
If the, and I apologize, Chairman Gillette, if, if any of, any members of the audience are going to speak, the chair would need to open the public hearing first.
Okay, I open the public hearing. Please state your name and your address.
Officer Weaver, 2260 Thompson Avenue in Kingman. First of all, I'd like to clarify, they're not misdemeanor charges, they are felony charges. There's 38 of them for two different individuals, and we would actually recommend declining this instead of just extending it, because of the conditions that we found the animals and the housing was extreme. And if you continue it, we haven't heard from the lady since the day we seized the animals. She hasn't shown up for a court date, she hasn't done any petitions, nothing. So if you continue this, she could potentially continue her practices with it until we can get further charges on her.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. So I will make a motion. I make a motion that we reject this application.
Second.
Chairman Gillette, I apologize for interrupting, but if you are going to make a motion, if we're not going to have any more discussion on this, I would recommend that you close the public hearing.
Public hearing, yes. I just, I get a little excited when we're talking about animals. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to make a motion that we reject item 11.
Do you deny?
I second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hubbard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 12 is commissioners' comments. Do you have anything that you would like to talk about? Okay, then we will move to the call to the public. Anyone here wishing to speak? Seeing none, and there is no more business to come before this commission, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you guys from Animal Control for being here today. That was, that was really important, what you had to say.